I had a little trouble calling this meeting to order last time, so we'll call this meeting, this work meeting of the Celine City Council, to order at 6:00 PM. Mayor Morrow is under the weather, so he's absent for the work meeting tonight. He expects to be here for the regular meeting. Members present are Councilmember Gearbuck. We haven't heard from Councilmember Seale. Okay, we'll wait and see. Councilmember McClellan, Councilmember Mitchell, Councilmember Dillon, and myself, Ms. Protemter. Staff President, City Manager Campbell, Clerk Royal, Police Chief Hart. And others present at the table are Councilmembers-elect Delorko and Camaro Sulek. So, could I have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
So moved, as submitted?
Seconded by Gearbuck, seconded by McClellan, to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion to excuse the absence of Mayor Morrow?
So moved?
Seconded by Gearbuck, seconded by McClellan, to excuse the absence of Mayor Morrow. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll wait and see about Councilmember Seale. Okay. We come now to public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and may comment or question on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? Seeing none, we will move on to our discussion item, which is community event applications. Mr. Campbell, did you want to kick us off? Clerk Royal, the floor is yours.
Okay, so I have a few comments for the community event application. It's been updated to include DPW equipment, which helps us figure out how much they will to suggest for billing, and available busing services. The fair parade was canceled for 2019. And then we also had concerns about the scarecrow locations, so those, something that I wanted to bring to your attention. But the rest of the memos from the DPW and the police department were pretty much in line with previous years, and the fire department, as usual, does not charge for their equipment, so. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Did you, before we move, before we move on to ques- before we move to questions, did you have any, did you want to discuss any further scarecrow location issues, or would that be something to come later?
I just know that Dean had emailed me about it during the scarecrow, so I didn't know exactly what it was that we needed to change.
I think it was more the issue of containing it within a certain location, well, within a certain space. Some of those were getting really large and starting to get into the way of the sidewalks and everything. And it's like, normally, I think when we first started this out, we were thinking scarecrows, scarecrows. Well, now they're becoming scarecrows with all kinds of accoutrements, and they're getting larger and larger, so they're probably, as in the case of the city, some kind of a recommendation as to height and to square footage in which it would be centered. Or that's kind of my thinking was, it's up to what council suggests on that.
So, and would you suggest that we discuss that tonight, or should that be on a different time?
It could be part of this. It's part of the conditions going forward if we authorize it, but just get input on it.
Okay. Well, since we've started with you, would you like to continue with any, or we'll just work our way around, from Councilmember Gearbuck to Mr. Camaro Sulek?
Okay. As I was talking earlier with Ms. Ahar, I pulled together some of the numbers in which you provided and was looking at, I guess, where we're going from last year. We were at a $23,000 budget, and so it looks like we're going upwards to, and this is just looking at labor, upwards of 20, I mean, we're over by $2,600 approximately from what we initially had as a budget. The $25,569 was the total cost that you showed on your memo, and then we had $23,000 in total. So, just highlighting that point and just identifying that. But then I looked at 2020 and pulling together the information from your sheets that you provided and making the same assumption about the police budget that we had, that in essence we would really want to bring the budget up to almost $26,300 to cover what we had done in the past. And then when you bring in the other equipment and the porta john rentals and all that, we're basically talking about approximately $38,000 in support for the community events.
No, it's actually been around 20, at the highest we had was the 25, but that is assuming, actually that was the issue, but for like, in 2018, and it's hard to do this without the Christmas parade, because that's like $3,000 to $3,500 coming out, but a lot of the prices of the costs have gone down because the police have been using VIPS, which really helps, so their amounts, so these are just estimates. And in the past, we estimated high, and so like in 2018 or '17, once everything was in, we only wound up spending per amount, $20,563, $28,000. But we estimate high and hope for lower.
And that's what I'm looking at, is that we estimated at $23,000 and we came in at $25,000, when you look at your numbers, on your memo, actually even on that sheet. The grand total was $25,000?
Right, or there's an estimate for 2020.
So that's your estimated budget? It's not the actuals for last year?
No, no.
Okay.
We're just guessing at numbers, that's, that's the most we assume that it's going to be.
Because I was looking also at the budget for DPW from last year to this year, and it looks like it goes up about $5,000. Is that where most of the costs are?
Yes.
Okay. That's it for me at this point.
Mr. Delorko?
I don't think I had any questions. I mean, we can discuss the scarecrow, I mean, I'd hate, I think maybe a size and, size and shape, but I'd hate to like necessarily limit specifically where they're going to go, because I think that will change from year to year, as far as.
Well, one of the things that I thought of, and this is open to suggestions, is maybe moving them back away a little bit more, like I know that the Superman, which was awesome, but he was out near the road, and I think there might be people who was thinking that was a person coming out of something, which I understand, but it's, there's cars out there, and we have a figure that looks like a different star, you don't know, so maybe we need to just fill them up. Maybe the reason they do them next to the light poles is that they need something to secure them to.
Anchor them, yeah.
So, there's hit and misses with all of those.
Right.
But maybe if you're going to have something like that, that there's a person's coming out of something, it could be moved to a different location on the side street or somewhere, or they could be further back.
I don't really have any thoughts or opinions on it.
I don't have any answers, but I understand what the problem is.
Right, right.
But I'm sure that there would be, um, Mr. Bor, Mr. Bor, who has to look at this.
Sounds good. Thank you. Possibly, I'll just suggest, when we get through their questions, we can call Chief Hart if you have any comments about some of those issues as well. You may have dealt with them already, or talked about them in the police department.
Yeah, does M.D. have, that would be my other question, is does M.D. have any say on any of that stuff? So, that's it for me.
Mr. Seale?
First, my apologies to everybody for being a little late. I read through this, and having, in past years, tried to prepare some of these sort of budget projections, I understand that they are just sort of a best guess in many cases. So I find them all to be within what I think of the general parameters of where we've been in the past, and I don't have any real questions or objections. I do commend Chief for what appears to be lowering of your, your costs, primarily due to the VIPS and the increased other cadets and so on.
Yes, sir.
Good job, sir.
Mr. Delorko, did you have any questions that you'd like to ask?
I'm following along closely for the time being. I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Dillon?
Thank you. I do have one question for Mr. Campbell, since Mr. Fordyce isn't here. DPW does not put down costs for like summer music series, things like that, like as, so, wait, it says prep setup. They're dropping off barricades or picking them up. Is that part of their normal workday? So, I mean, what if they're on something else? I guess I just wanted to make sure that we're accounting for that, like how does that, what's the arrangement?
Well, so, they're stored in the dumpster corral, and then the volunteers set them up.
Oh, so they just live there?
Correct.
Awesome.
Yep.
Okay.
And then they also, they also come and get the trailer for the chairs and stage and whatnot, and they deliver that and set that up, and then they tear it down and bring it back.
Okay. Awesome. Then I, Clerk Royal, the fair parade, have they contacted you at all about 2020?
Yes, they did submit, because next year.
So they have submitted, and so they're looking forward to doing a parade again? Okay. Awesome.
That's right, you put an estimated amount in there.
And then my other comments, I think, you know, I think these are just really important events that the community looks forward to, so I think that allocating dollars in advance. In the past, we've had sort of a little bit of a slush fund. Are we doing that again? Are we rounding up, or to make sure, in case something pops up during the year?
If something were to come forward, it would come to council, and you would be able to say yes or no, and at that point, we'd be able to see a little closer what other things are, because as the numbers come in, I put them into my spreadsheet. So 2020 is estimate, but before that are all the actual numbers that we put in as they get sent to us. So, we can see where we are, so it's always nice to have it, but for the last few years, we've had this slush fund, and it hasn't been really used.
Okay. So then, I guess, what I'm trying to figure out, the other thing, I'm sorry I missed it, was Winterfest is listed here as a zero, and it's for 2020. So, did we put dollars away in the current plan for Winterfest that are extra now, and they're looking for, because Winterfest would be in January or February, and so that would be in this budget. So are they talking about the following budget?
We did, last time we did a Winterfest, it was Brum Ball, and that was downtown.
Right.
There was no fees associated with it. I mean, they closed off the road, but there was no actual fees associated, so they haven't submitted anything for a Winterfest.
Okay, so I guess I was just trying to figure out, is this a placeholder then for them?
Well, that's a good thing to come out.
For 2021?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And then as far as the scarecrow, I did want to ask, I agree with what Mr. Gearbuck had said, that I think we should put a little bit of parameters on that, and I don't know whether it's that they all have to be secured, or they have to have, in order to be freestanding, they have to be weighted, because I know that, I see Mr. Bor out there quite a bit repositioning things, and some of them kind of fall into the sidewalk way, some fall towards the road, and he's very diligent in taking care of those, but I do think that we should like, you know, loose items on them, that like, you know, clothing or wigs that go flying off in the wind down Michigan Avenue. And I do think, and I may, as a past participant in that scarecrow contest, I think the standard rule was, and I'm not sure if this came from the city or Mr. Bor, that we could, you could not attach to the big white poles at the four corners, that those belong to M.D.
Oh, the street poles.
The, the, the street light, not the, not the street lights, the traffic poles.
Right, the street poles.
Street poles that hold up the, the traffic lights.
Correct.
Yes.
So that was, and I don't know that that's actually been conveyed to people, and so if it is, if that is the rule, maybe that should be put out there so that people know not to utilize that. And I think we've kind of worked through some of the other issues where they were in islands and at some various places in the past, so, that's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you, dear Protem. I guess my, so I'm, I'm so happy to be in support of these events, and I'm asking, not for a particular, I'm going to name a particular event, but I'm not necessarily saying, you know, this event should do something or other, but when I, I look for Celtic Festival, July 10th and 11th, and I think that is page eight of our packet.
Is that what you have?
Yes. Okay. So, you know, obviously, that's a more intensive event. Is council look, and I'd be eager to hear what people's opinions are, are we going to have a cutoff point? Are we going to just say, well, you know, it's a community event, so we're going to provide this support, or, you know, should it, should some costs for this be built into the Celtic Festival budget? I don't have an answer for that, I just would like to ask the question. Regarding the scarecrows, I also heartily support that activity and have seen the traffic that increases downtown as a result of that, and we owe a great debt to Dr. Bor for his, his work on that. And I guess, I'm of two minds about it. So, some of the things that I really enjoyed were larger or, or different, like the underdog, I think that won first place, that was so neat. It wasn't something tied to a pole, you know, placing in, in front of a business, maybe that was more appropriate. I, I don't know. I'm hoping we can find some common sense rules and not dampen the creative and fun part of the contest. I don't know what that would look like yet. Do we, do we want to have some of the scarecrows inside, like Merchant, Merchant Square, has walk-through areas or common areas? I, I don't know, but I think it's, it's a good suggestion to, to take a look at it and make sure that we have all of our, our safety in mind.
Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Camaro Sulek, did you have any questions that you'd like to ask? Okay.
In regards to the DPW costs, and the significant increase from last year, is that attributed to the hourly rate that's charged? And without the benefit of prior year's numbers, I don't know if there's a, you know, a COLA that's applied to our DT, DPW rates, and 5,000 seems to be a significant increase.
Well, there is, and it's also that we only, I'm sorry, we only add the cost for overtime, so these are overtime fees, so it's not only you're doing their salaries, but it's time of the tab, so that's why it's more expensive for the DPW.
Right. All right, so that accounts for the 5,000 more than, than last year?
Right.
Okay. And just to follow up a little bit more on the scarecrows, do we have param, like what Kristen had to say, do we have parameters on the size that they are, and the amount of space that they take up around where they're tied to or standing? And we might want to, because as the years have gone on, people have really up their game with their scarecrows, so we, we don't want somebody building a, you know, something monstrous, and then we have to tell them, oh, that's too big, it won't fit.
We don't at this time, but that's what I'm, I'm asking the guidance.
All right. And then maybe the amount of space around where it's tied up to, so that it doesn't get into the sidewalk. I'm sure it would depend upon each of the locations, so I know that's, that would be difficult, but just to be proactive with that. That's all I have.
Just if I could, just to expand it, so, you allow Dr. Bor and, you know, he goes together, the, 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 the slush, but.
What I also say is, you know, you have to maintain a minimum of five feet, right, of walkable space on the sidewalk, so that, that's first and foremost, but we could certainly, you know, staff can certainly sit down with, with Dr. Bor and, and come up with, with some suggestions and move forward to, so yeah, I mean, I certainly can't disagree that, like you, it's, I like how you put it, people are stepping up their game, but they're, they're getting more elaborate and larger, and it's a, it's a great event, no doubt, but certainly we want to make sure we don't go over that line.
Yeah. Safety and. Keep everybody happy with their scarecrows. Thank you, I, I yield the floor.
Just to piggyback on what Mr. Camaro Sulek was saying, we have had areas with outdoor seating, and, and I think, so I can't remember, is that taken in by the time the scarecrows go out?
Usually, yes.
Usually, yes, okay. So that will help, that, and then regarding the five feet, so on the pole, so they're, they're actually quite close to the road, right, on that light pole, so are you talking about a five feet, like a circumference, starting from the curb, like it'd look like a little bit bigger than a semicircle?
They just have to have, you know, five feet of pass to, on the sidewalk area, similar, the same rule applies to, you just mentioned about the outdoor seating, right?
Okay.
So, yeah, that, that's all I'm saying, not necessarily five feet of circumference, just that wherever they're located, there's got to be five feet of, of access, unimpeded access to, to move around.
So, for example, if a scarecrow is at. Brecken, these are the ones I see the most. If a scarecrow's at Brecken, then it has to be five feet between the, like if this is the light pole, and this is the street, so there has to be five feet between here and there, and a building, is that what you're saying? Is that right?
So, what I would say is there needs to be five, so whether it's, if there be five feet, so.
Sometimes, so, for instance, I guess to be, to try and be more clear from my perspective, from my side, so, at Brecken, they have the tables and chairs between the curb, you know, from the, from the curb, rack of the curb, right? And so then there's five feet of sidewalk, so you, in theory, you could have, as long as you had five feet of, yeah, five feet of unimpeded walkway, they could have it up against the building, but it's, depending on the location, how wide the sidewalk is, right? So you have, by definition, that first five feet from the building is the walkable area, so, is the sidewalk, right? But we all know that people walk on the bricks, too.
Right, right.
So, you know, as long as there's that five feet of unimpeded.
Okay.
So whether it's up against the building or on the curb.
It just can't be in the middle.
It would, it just has to be passable.
Right.
It's just an ADA.
Okay. Sure, okay, thank you for clarifying that.
It's a good place to rest.
Thank you. Clerk Royal, can you just, the, the whole busing service memo that was attached, is that just for informational purposes, or like, are we supposed to be considering something about that, or?
You guys asked me to create something for the, to add it to our system last year, so that if we, if somebody wanted to allow busing services, that they could have options. So we created busing options.
So that would be on the event planner side?
Right, because.
We are not adding those costs to our budget.
No, those would be costs, but if somebody says, I want to add an event, and it's going to bring significant traffic downtown, and, and we don't have a place for them to park, we could say, these are your busing options, contact.
Okay.
Some of them are quite, you know, one of them is this old school bus, so, I mean, it's really very smart to do, if, if we can encourage them to do it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And I, I, oh, beg your pardon.
Well, I'm going to slip in first with my own question, and comment about scarecrows first. So, we have Christmas parade slash tree lighting, which is really now two events, right? Or we?
Separately, but there's, if I.
But this is the total.
If I separate them, then I'd have to have another spreadsheet.
No, oh, no, no, that would be terrible. No, okay, I just, just, so it is two events, and, and they're managed separately, and this is the total of both.
Kind of like Celtic, it's by, hey, they're really together, but they're separated accounts.
Okay, okay, thank you. No, no, that's fine. Just, it was just about clarification. And then, so, I think about scarecrows, I would say, since I live downtown, I see them, I see a lot of them, and they're great. And about sort of upping games and increasing footprints, one of my favorite ones about three years ago was three straw bales spread out, you know, separate from each other, and, and dressed as minions. So, they weren't attached to any poles, they were, and they were kind of spread out, but they didn't impede the walkways. So, I would hate to see, you know, the return of the minions be prohibited by, if we went overboard with rules, so I'll, I'll just say that.
Hundred minions would be something.
A hundred, three, three, yeah, well, yeah, maybe we can put a footnote. Yeah, probably not a hundred minions. Okay. Mr. Gearbuck, and then Ms. Mitchell again?
Yeah, I was just going to say, so the community busing thing is just an extra page you add to the application.
Correct. But I wanted to guess that I had actually.
Nope, that's perfect.
No.
And it was, I kind of wonder what that was, but if that helps, it's like.
Perfect.
Sorry.
No, the only other thing, though, is just to clarify, so we're really actually asking based on, presenting approximately $2,500 increase over what our previous budgets have been. So based on that, to present a much required.
Okay. Ms. Mitchell?
So I just wanted, as a point of information, to remind folks that I believe busing to events had come out of one of our strategic planning meetings, and it was an effort to promote that for our events, enough, in, to try to decongest the downtown for some of these events, so I think that's why. Thank you.
Chief Hart, do you have anything to say about scarecrows and safety?
I must have been absent that day at the police academy when they talked about those things.
Plying on your vast experience.
So, I feel, fielded two complaints in the last two years over the scarecrows. Both of them had to do with crosswalk or a sidewalk. So I guess the recommendation from at least myself would be to think about creating some type of a rule, whether it's 25 feet, or 50 feet, or 75 feet away from the intersection, which is a real stinker, because that's very visible, right? You know, I, on my way to work during the scarecrow contest, I love driving around and seeing them on my way to work. I mean, it's really, it's a really neat thing. But the complaints that I field are where it looks like one of the scarecrows is going to enter into traffic. So if we were to have some type of a rule, if you would consider that, of saying, hey, there, you have to be X amount of feet away from the sidewalk, or X amount of feet from the crosswalk, whatever it may be, that would certainly be helpful for us. One of the complaints came from someone with autonomous vehicle technology, so I think that that could be an unintended consequence of, you know, some of the technology that's being developed, will it recognize, you know, the different technology? Will it recognize that as somebody coming out into the road, and then take some type of evasive action?
Right.
So those are, it's a, it's an awesome thing, it's really cool. But I think we have to kind of think outside of the box a little bit, and try to find a way to blend, you know, a great event with a little bit enhanced security. Getting them away from the sidewalks, maybe making a rule that you can't have a scarecrow that looks like it's about to go into traffic, you know, just some simple things. I thought the Superman was really cool, you know, and that was, this year's complaint was, it looks like the person's about, you know, to enter the roadway. And I went out, and I had been looking at it for a while, and, and really, if you were eastbound on Michigan Avenue, stopped at four corners, you can kind of say, if I'm making a left turn to go north, maybe I'm concerned that, that looks like somebody running out into the roadway. But if you're westbound on Michigan Avenue, or on Ann Arbor, it didn't really seem to be that much of a concern, and I think we were a week away when we got that complaint from the end of the, of the contest, and we, that is the only complaint that we fielded, not saying that it's not a valid complaint, but, so maybe looking at things that, hey, you can't have a scarecrow that looks like someone's about to run into the roadway. You can't have them that are so close to crosswalks or sidewalks. Just a couple of suggestions from, from my perspective. I did reach out to M.D., spoke to Priscilla over at DPW, doesn't appear to be any type of, other than attaching things, they don't like folks attaching objects to their posts and poles and structures, but other than that, everything fell within their, their
So, this is a question for my clarification, then a question for everyone. So at this point, it's Dr. Bor who, who. this point, it's Dr. Borer who, who manages the rules and manages expectations and, and what the contestants have to do, um, okay, that's correct, right? Okay, so do we have any interest in having the city take over the rule-taking process, or would we prefer to have consultation with Dr. Borer to review his rules and maybe make some just upgrades or, or clarifications? I'm seeing...
Clarification, leave that place in your manager, leave it in control, we don't need a council to make those suggestions.
Everybody's...
Yeah, that was what I was, I have a note in here that, that we could, staff can sit down with Dr. Borer and review these, these comments and questions and come up with, um, again, still trying to let, let him provide the rules and regulations and oversight and just working along, uh, with him.
And, and do you feel you have enough information from this discussion to, to go and do that? Okay, all right, anything else, so I, so can we check off scarecrows discussion as, okay, consensus achieved, good, Ms. Dillon.
Can I just have for a clarification, Clerk Royal, you mentioned that the DPW hours are overtime hours?
The ones that we put on these are only overtime, we do not add any regular hours.
So why are they listed as regular hours, not overtime on the sheet? Jeff?
But they're not included, Janet, they're not included in the totals on the front page, the front page only includes the, the overtime numbers.
But I take the information I put into what I'm asking for.
Ah, so that's...
In each of those cost estimates, if you look in the lower right corner, there's a, there's a line, regular hours, overtime hours, equipment, and then kind of...
Right, okay, so we're only considering just the overtime hours?
And the equipment.
Right. So everything that's on here has to be done as overtime, what's on here has to be done as overtime hours?
The overtime, yeah, so the overtime that's listed there is required overtime, so it's like...
It's after this hours type things, okay.
Yep, they're significant, and some of the events, they're significant, regular times, and...
Right, right, okay, thank you.
Just to add a comment about, it was, it was quite eye-opening to see these sheets, to understand a little bit of, of how complicated it is for DPW to, um, figure out how much its costs are.
A little bit of everything, yeah.
So, Mr. Girbert?
Uh, just my only, um, comment about this, I don't have a problem increasing this budget, but as a lot of these events support the main scene, Main Street, and they come forward asking for additional, I think we need to be able to offset some of those requests by these increases, whether it's trade or...
Okay, um, Ms. Mitchell raised a question related to the amount of money, not Celtic Festival itself, but the amount of money devoted to Celtic Festival, and if I understood correctly, whether we felt we needed an upper limit for any one event, was that your, where you were going with that question?
Thank you.
So does anyone have comments or thoughts about that? Ms. Dillon?
So, thank you, um, just for clarification, we don't get the actual totals after the event is over.
Correct.
So, do we have any kind of, and I think this is maybe what you're asking, but I'm not sure, because I don't want to speak, are we referring to like capping them at like, okay, this is the only dollar amount you're allowed, you know, we estimated you at seven thousand, so if you, you can't go over seven thousand without getting a revised approval, is that what you're asking? Because I guess that's, what I don't want to see is us raising our, our numbers and then coming back going, oh, we, we underestimated, and so what was twenty-five is now thirty.
We do have a few events that paid, like the, um, Party in the Park, they paid for anything, the Fourth of July, they paid for all of the extra stuff, um, and then the Rotary has a cemetery tour, so we do have a few items that come to city council, get approval, but they still pay for any, um, DPW or portage jobs and stuff, so there are items, I know that as far as the Celtic is, that they're working towards being self-sufficient, but they're not there yet, but that is their goal, so, but, I mean, I've been here for six years and we've, we've seen it go down, so we're, we're hoping that they're getting better.
Okay, but I guess I just want to know what we have as some sort of a safeguard, where if there was, and I mean, Celtic's the one that really comes to mind, because it, it's the most labor-intensive, is if you were to have rain delays in setup, to where you couldn't get everything done at one point, and you had to go back and do more, or it's, there was, they decided to switch things around and there was something different, and so there was more time invested for DPW, I guess that's what I'm trying to ask is, you know, do we have any way of making sure that we don't go over budget prior to going over budget?
To some extent we do, um, when, when the time of the event actually comes up and, you know, we're dealing with the organizers and they have their list of activities, you know, hoping to do this for us, that, and the other thing, I compare that to what was approved, and make sure that we're, we're in the ballpark, and especially with, um, things that are an actual outlay of cash, with renting portages, um, we always refer back to these applications and make sure that the number of portages they're asking for is what was reflected in here and what was, you know, subsequent to the council.
Okay.
So the labor, um, that's a little harder to track live at the moment, um, but, you know, that scenario where if there's a rain delay, then we're, we're doing something else, you know, so we're not, you know, if Celtic was a slow setup, we would be working on it, if, you know, we couldn't get out on the field for whatever reason, uh, we'd be doing something else, so it's...
Okay.
You know, so, in, unless there's some big change in the ask of any organizing organization, then, then we're, we're grateful.
Okay, thank you, and I just want clarification on the other question I asked, which was if we're having any sort of slush fund, because I don't know, are we going to round up, I, I just feel like in the past, we have kept like an extra thousand in case events came up during the year?
Well, we're not positive that these are the actual amounts that are going to cost, and how much they're going to be, so it might be less on some and more on others, but we would bring it up to council and you would have the ability, we would be able to show you what has been spent up to this point, what we estimate for the future, and if you wanted to create enough for this, for the, um, the supposed event or for this new event.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does, it does, it just means we have to find dollars in the moment versus earmarking dollars in advance.
Right.
So I would rather see the latter of having, of dollars in advance, so that if we had either owner runs or other events that came up, we wouldn't be over budget.
Mr. G, oh, Mr. Campbell, did you want to respond? Oh, Mr. Girbert, okay.
Um, I agree with Ms. Dillon, I think, um, what I was looking at was trying to understand exactly where we went from twenty-three thousand to this new one, new figure of like twenty-six thousand, whatever it is, that all, so this year includes equipment, what I was doing was I was looking at what DPW was for 2019 to what it is for 2020, the recommendation, and the majority of the expense increase is all related to the Christmas parade, it's going from fourteen hundred dollar budget to forty-five hundred dollars, um, so it's pretty attributable to that, it's not necessarily to the Celtic, you probably don't have these numbers, I created these numbers myself in this discussion.
Okay.
So what I was looking at was trying to figure out, based on what was being presented for 2020 compared to what was, um, 2019, and so there's the savings related to the police department, so those costs have gone down, so the costs have gone up associated with DPW, and then maybe some of the expenditures for equipment and portages, so, uh, the reason why I'm looking at this is from saying, it's not necessarily the Celtic festival that's contributed to it, but it's really realigning the costs, and apparently it's the Christmas parade and tree lighting that have brought it up, and if that pays, if that's a new expenditure, or is that a new estimate, I guess that's the question we have for, um, Mr. Borer. Look at the very first page where it has the dollar amounts that are going up here, combination of both the Christmas tree and the, um, parade is approximately forty-five hundred dollars. And then we go back to last year's and look at what that was.
Well, so the, the DPW estimate for the upcoming Christmas parade, the next year's Christmas parade, is about twenty-six hundred.
Plus the Christmas tree, right?
Yeah, that includes the Christmas tree, so, um, and there's, there's about a thousand dollars of overtime labor in that, and then the rest is, is equipment charges, you know, the equipment that we use while we're doing that, or, um, I'm looking back at the page, it's April, it's February, it's twenty, and it's showing last year's Christmas parade, DPW cost, two thousand fifty-three.
I'm trying to compare the numbers, there's three different sets of numbers, we've got the full seat with the green sheets, the green sheets, and we've got the schedules that have the actual costs, DPW versus police costs, and then we have equipment somewhere there, so there's a little...
The, I think the total...
It's a confusion from what last year was to this year, so...
Apples to apples.
I'm trying to look at apples to apples, and so, understanding what are the labor costs versus what are equipment versus the portages, and that would be helpful, because then we would know whether or not we really truly have an increase in one specific area, because it sounds like when we're looking at total costs from last year, our actual costs based on our audit, they are...
Well, uh, 2018, we, we weighed, the approval was twenty-six fifty, but we went five hundred and forty over, so it was actually like thirty-one hundred for the, for the 2018, 2019, we estimated that we would be twenty-eight hundred, but we haven't gotten to the 2019 Christmas parade yet, so now we're estimating for 2020, so we're adding more on top of what we estimated for 2019, so you can understand, there's a little bit of confusion, I understand, the spreadsheets are not the easiest, but I'm trying to give you apples to apples, so you can look at them, um, DPW from previous years, police from previous years, and then totals from previous years, and then on that one sheet, I just have 2018 and 19 actual costs.
Yeah, and that's kind of where I was trying to compare them against what was the budgets, when you look at your actual sheets, where you show the actuals versus what was, and I actually went back to last year's email, which had the 2019 budget on it, so that's where I'm comparing last year's budget to this year's budget, and that discrepancy is falling out there, and I'm trying to figure out where it is, but the question is, what exactly is the amount that we're asking for this next year, and you're saying it's twenty-five thousand five sixty-nine?
As for the total for all the community events, yes.
Okay, so then I would say we would roll that up to twenty-six five hundred to accommodate for what Ms. Dillon is talking about, not a slush fund, but to allow us for potential any kind of event coming in, with the likelihood that our budget, that would cover all our expenditures, I mean, I'm a little more concerned about the reason we're going up three thousand dollars this year, but without really adding more events, so the question in that would be, what truly is kicking into our costs, even though we're, you know, what we've been saying is that it's the, um, DPW, there's more hours or more just the cost of labor?
Uh, most of these cost estimates are based on past actuals, um, you know, with some allowance for, uh, variances, we did look at all the applications that came in, and, um, I believe it was, um, Summerfest had requested, uh, two or three additional portages over what they had last year, so that is in the equipment cost for that, for that event, and, um, you know, that's, I don't know, three or four hundred dollars right there.
I think that's for me, is trying to understand what that's happening, at this point, as long as we know that their cost of twenty-five, five thirty-nine estimated, whatever, we might as well look through the twenty-six five, continue, continue with our thousand dollar unanticipated cost, and again, that's, we've got to find three thousand dollars for next year's, you know, the difference of what, we were at twenty-three thousand, now we're going up to twenty-six five, so we're asking for a three thousand and a half dollars for, have to find twenty-four.
Okay, any comments, reactions to that, everyone's okay with Mr. Girbert's suggestion on the final amount we, we are asking, we will be asked to approve?
So we're just taking, just so that everyone knows, we're taking the yearly total that's highlighted, you know, and adding one thousand dollars to that.
Bring it up to twenty-six five hundred.
Right, are, are you rounding it up, or are you just adding a thousand dollars?
I'm rounding it up to twenty-six five hundred, so whatever the difference between that amount and, uh, twenty-six five hundred is the amount that could potentially be set aside for any of them.
Nine hundred, nine hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-six cents, I believe.
I like to use rounded numbers.
All right, so everyone, we have consensus on that? Heads are nodding around the table or not moving at all, so, okay. Clerk Royal, do you, do you believe you have, uh, consensus and understand what to do next?
Yes, and this will be, um, the next council meeting, December second.
Okay, Ms. Mitchell.
Um, as, as we talk about portages, I think it's worthwhile to discuss public restrooms, permanent public restrooms downtown, um, and, and just have a discussion on the feasibility, look at what, you know, our, our rental, ooh, is, is it better now? Okay, looking at what our rental costs are over the long term versus building some kind of permanent structure, um, for restrooms.
Suggesting this as a, a topic for future?
Yeah, I look...
Research or, and discussion, or...
I mean, it's not urgent, but I think it's worthwhile looking at the numbers and seeing, you know, we're redoing possibly Merchant Park, we're talking about bringing more people downtown, but we have to be able to accommodate that, and is it better to do rentals, or is it better to have some type of permanent restroom structure?
Any other comments? Okay.
Can I ask Mr. Portes one question, I'm sorry?
Yes, go ahead.
Last year, there was complications with installation of the Christmas tree, have those been resolved?
Yes, yeah, we constructed a new stand, um, and, uh, we made arrangements with Key Bank to continue that arrangement there, so we...
Okay, so is it still going to be the big, okay, if it doesn't go to the ground?
All right.
Thank you.
If there's no other discussion of community event applications, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by McClellan, seconded by Dillon to adjourn, all those in favor at six forty-nine PM, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, motion carries.